Good morning. Welcome to today's Planning Commission meeting. Today is September 11th, 2025. And I'd like to call the meeting to order at 9:03. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on this and which is the representative and justice for all.
Pam, do we have verification of legal notice? Okay, thank you. Our consent agenda, I don't see anything in there. So we'll move on to public input.
Thank you. Maria Turner, Community Development Director. Today is 9/11 and across the country, we are doing commemorations of the tragedy that hit us in 2001. I would like to request that at 9/11, we take a moment of silence in that commemoration. Also, if you're in the courthouse today, you'll see our Lakeport Fire District personnel. They are going up the courthouse stairs 27 or 28 times, some with gear, some with not, to commemorate the loss of their colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. With that being said, we still have public input open where anyone from the public can speak about any subject that is not in today's agenda. So I'll take a look in the Zoom room to see if there's any hands. If anyone in the chambers wishes to speak, you guys are welcome to do so. Seeing none, we will close public input and move on to our timed items, which there are none. Moving on to our non-timed items, we have item 7A, Presentation of the Lake County Housing Action and Implementation Plan, HAI-P, and that'll be directed to our staff.
Thank you. I'll welcome our Deputy CIO for Housing, Lisa Judd. She has been working on this plan for, what, a year? And we're really excited about it. We've gathered plenty of significant data. Some of it will be surprising to you, some of it won't, since y'all live in Lake County. And we do appreciate the effort of this Housing Action and Implementation Plan in that it will significantly inform our seventh cycle housing element, which we do intend to get started probably later, really in 2026. Thank you.
Good morning, Commission. Thank you for having us here today. As Maria said, this has been a collaborative effort for just slightly over a year. Maria and Shannon Walker-Smith were an integral part of this, as well as our placeworks team to create this Housing Action and Implementation Plan. There's a link to it on the administrative website, and it is a 400-plus-page document. But it is broken up by different sections, so it's not intimidating. And there's some, depending on which area you're interested in, I encourage you to look further into it. At the Board of Supervisors meeting, we did a presentation, and it was a couple hours, so this will not be that. So I will kind of highlight things and then open it up for any questions that you may have. But again, I encourage you to, you know, check that document out if you have not read it already. The first thing, as Maria mentioned, is that this Housing Action and Implementation Plan is very different in the sense that this was not required. This is something that we did so that we could further housing in the county. It is to address the full spectrum of housing in the county and not just one area, which is a huge undertaking. And part of that undertaking was to first have community engagement. So let me start our slide. Oh, wrong one. This is the... That's okay. That's for Ben and I. Totally fine. I'll go ahead and start until we get that up and running. So this is going to build, the HAIP will help set the acronym, because it's very mouthful to say Housing Action Implementation Plan every time. So the HAIP is going to be a foundational element for the housing element, but it is not part of the housing element. A lot of the work that's done here will make it easier for the folks when we get to the housing element. Sorry about that. I know.
It's the matrix.
It's not this.
Oh, this is the wrong one?
Yeah, wrong presentation.
If your commission would like to have a training, we can do that.
Oh, it's on the USB. Oh, okay, got it.
Brown Act.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to do it at the beginning of the year, just to kind of, you know.
Cover it and...
Yeah.
No, no, no.
Sometimes. Yeah, and they may not all apply. Yeah, so maybe, there may be some that apply to the commission, I mean, not the commission, to the board. Like, closed session stuff won't apply to the Planning Commission, things like that. I think the most recent change is related to remote attendance and how that applies. No, they did last, a short while ago. They did.
While we're taking this moment with our technology, if we could just observe a moment of silence, should the commission be amenable? We could stand, please?
You know, if it'd be helpful, I can go grab my flash drive.
Oh, no, there's a command, so that shows the full page. I'm sorry? Well, that's when you're in, when you're in PowerPoint.
Yeah. If you exit out the tools on the top.
I'm sorry?
If you do the little X on the All Tools, it's on the right down. Yeah, where's, I mean, the left side where it has the little X, this is All Tools. Slightly down, 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 down. Yeah, right there, you're almost at, that might like open it up more.
Is that it?
Might be it.
Just go forward? Thank you!
I use, I use that program.
It's a village.
Up and down?
Left and right.
Okay, I didn't write, and it was blank.
There's a blank page on the PowerPoint.
Okay. Ah, there we go.
Yeah.
So this isn't my presentation. This is the actual Housing Action and Implementation Plan.
Let's not cover that page by page.
Let's not. It's 400 pages. That's okay. I do have the presentation on a flash drive, which I had in here earlier, but I can grab that or we can just talk about it, whatever your commission would like. My office is right here, so. I think so. Yes.
The presentation is very helpful. If the commission would like to either take a brief break or we could switch the order while Ms. Judd goes and gets the PowerPoint, maybe a three-minute break would be sufficient?
Absolutely. My office is close.
Yeah, we'll take a three-minute break and come back so that we can get that PowerPoint. All right, welcome back. We're back. We got the PowerPoint ready, and we're ready to continue with the presentation.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll kind of go to where we left off here. This project took us a little over a year. There were several components to the HAIP, one of which was the community engagement. First, we did analysis of current conditions. Then we looked into the gaps, goals and strategies, action steps. And additionally, we did a site inventory and an interactive web map as well. Excuse me. I think for some reason, I wanted to touch on the community engagement portion. And we did start with community engagement, and we did a really extensive and really intriguing to get feedback from the community before we even started. We did a bunch of the LAP meetings. We did eight in total, Cobb, Kelseyville, Lakeport, Lowerlake, Middletown, Riviera, Shoreline, and Upperlake. We also then went to Lakeport and Clearlake again to do another series to try to get that community engagement. We did GPAC. We did booths at the Blackberry Cobbler Festival and the fair. And additionally, we did stakeholder meetings with the Environmental Justice Group, development and real estate individuals, the continuum of care here in Lake County, the economic development, housing individuals, Spanish-speaking community members, agricultural and tribal engagement. So again, and then we also met with the cities of Clearlake and Lakeport. I'm not sure that I mentioned this, but the cities of Clearlake and Lakeport are also included in this as well, in this plan. I won't go through all the funding opportunities, but if you look in the HAIP, they also outline many funding opportunities that will be for us in the future. We're kind of in a time of uncertainty, so we don't know what those funding sources will be, but we have kind of historical funding sources that we can look to. So one of the things that we've been looking at when we went through the community engagement and the things that we need was a gaps analysis. I think we all know here in Lake County that rehab, rehabilitation of homes is a very needed thing here in the county so that we can preserve the housing stock we have. So while it's important to think of how can we attain new housing, rehabilitation is equally as important. And again, the need for housing of all types was really emphasized here. So there's not just one type of housing that we need in the county. It's across all economic levels. We need housing in every category. And also a need for specialized groups as well.
Can you ask questions as you go along, or you want to wait till the end?
It's whatever your preference is. You might want to wait until the end just to see if maybe it answers, but you're welcome if you want to chime in as you go. Okay. One of the things was vacant infill sites. So with the fires and the need for us to have the infrastructure in place, vacant infill sites, it seems like it also was prioritized as something that we need to look at. Some of the things we are not able to help totally with this is insurance and industry coverage. Clearly, that is an important factor for housing that we can't always control, but that is also discussed in the HAIP document itself. Some of the goals and strategies that I would like to highlight here, one, and these are not in any particular order, so there's no emphasis on the first one, is creating housing of all economic types. And there are several strategies under there, including ADUs. There's an increase in number of homeless housing that needs to happen. Expanding opportunity for small-lot residential development throughout the county, working to build residential options. There was an identification from the community about, you know, having housing that has amenities and different things that, resilience and that kind of thing. Mixed-use developments was very our, when we did the community engagement, we got a lot of positive reception for mixed use. Additionally, we have a lot of feedback that we need to have people come in. We need people to have housing for our workers in the county, and so that's a need that's we really need to look at as well. And addressing housing needs for first-time home buyers. I know that many of us want the next generation to stay in the county and stay here. And having those opportunities for that first-time home buyers is also something that will help strengthen our community and keep people here. Additionally, we have veterans. There's a need for veteran units here in Lake County. I know that many of us feel strongly about that. I grew up military, and so I definitely have a strong desire and passion to make sure that segment is also served. And seniors. We have a very high population of seniors, as all you all know, here in the county. And so that is something else that is going to be addressed in the HAIP and look for those opportunities as well. This one was interesting, because when we first started, my background was in a housing authority, and I ran their voucher program, so I have a lot of insight to this. And we have very few vouchers for the size of our county compared to what I have seen in other counties. And since then, of course, we've changed our regional housing model, or it's changing too, and it's actually in transition right now. And I'm really hoping that that will help this part so that we can have those, a different system so that will provide more housing subsidies and, as well as project-based, so we can have development with the project-based, which they have promised should come in at some point. Here, we have a GIS system to continue to update. So we have a sites inventory. It's pretty extensive and a web map, and it needs further refinement. There were only, there's potential sites identified, and we need to keep going with that so that we can identify, continue to identify, you know, really ideal housing sites. continue to identify, you know, really ideal housing sites. And then last is creating opportunities for the three jurisdictions to for securing funding. One thing that I have seen that I really been happy about is that with the advent of the Housing Trust Fund is there's been all three, you know, entities, the Clear Lake and Lakeport and the county really having these discussions about county, about housing. Now we're at goal two. I know there's a lot of subcategories under the first one. So this kind of goes back to encouraging and facilitating infill development. Really, there's a lot here and it kind of goes through in the Hape, so you're welcome to read on it. But again, it's utilizing the infrastructure that we have in place and encouraging that infill development. There was a wonderful idea that was put forth in our community engagement regarding, you know, the issue that after the fires were a lot of vacant land sites that were overgrown with vegetation and things like that. So establishing a local land trust was also one of the strategies here. And again, it kind of goes back to that main, the rehabilitation of neighborhoods, support the programs that are already here to assist with home repairs as well as technical assistance and establishing a rehabilitation program and identifying the funds so that we can do that. Again, addressing issues with, along with rehab, mobile homes, huge, huge challenge in our county. And I don't think it's going to be one that's easily corrected. I wish I had a magic solution and magic wand for this one, but it's going to be a challenge. But it does have to be addressed and we need to look at how we can overcome this issue. This, what this goal comes down to, you know, how can we make housing easier here in the county? How can we incentivize people to want to build in Lake County? Streamlining the process, fee reductions, increase in communication. How do we make this a developer friendly place? Some of the strategies are also including amending different kind of county zoning or with Lakeport and Clear Lake as well to help increase that and and kind of prioritize the types of housing that we're wanting to encourage. There's an extensive, if you're curious about the community engagement, what the, you know, feedback was the community from the different events that we had. We have a whole appendix on that and it kind of really goes into that. Current conditions, I think, is really, really fascinating. I would encourage you, especially being a planning commission, to look at it. I thought it was interesting that, you know, they were talking about we need approximately fifteen, 1,590 units through 2037. And any of you have looked at the RENA numbers, that's much lower than the RENA number. So we do need housing that really equals about 150 units for the next 13 years. So we really have our work cut out for us. There was a lot of really interesting things in the current conditions, including things like there's, over time, according to the data that we have, and again, this is Placeworks that did this data, their deep dive kind of showed a trend towards more higher income over the time and decrease in the lower income, which was really interesting. And I'd like to kind of dive into like what, why is that, right? That's really an important piece of that. But there's a lot of really interesting things in there about overcrowding, everything from, you know, what the composition is for owner and renter households and things like that. So I encourage you to look deeper into that. And then we also show all of the data. So there's a lot of data behind this plan in Appendix C. Again, this goes with the community engagement. There's some pictures here. We did a lot of a community engagement. This kind of goes through the different appendices that I just, appendices that I just went through. And this lists some of those different things that you can find in those appendices. The sites analysis is also very important. It's a first step for us. Support the implementation, identify priority sites and focus efforts on encouraging incentivizing housing production. We envision this and the web map as being something really useful that we can use if developers come to and they need a certain criteria. And this will also help prepare for our seventh cycle housing element as well. So in this, you know, there's a sites analysis summary report. There's a GIS based resources, which we have an interactive web map where you can go in and filter by different criteria type to find different types of possible housing sites. And then there's a very extensive Excel spreadsheet that we have that we can kind of export and play with to find the information that we need. A lot of these next slides are kind of in the kind of lengthier presentation, but they really go into kind of the GIS portion of this. So while there's this 400 page document on the Hape, there's also very wonderful resources as far as sites and interactive web map. Some of the things that we're looking at, further refining are kind of listed here. We'll just go through this. And just to give you an idea of what this interactive web map is that I'm referring to, this is kind of what it looks like. There's a link to it. You go to the interactive web map. It is not instant in this world, I think, where you, it's a very powerful tool, but I was like, well, it's not working, you know? And so it does take a moment, but it does have a lot of really useful features to kind of go through that. And those, these slides again are kind of like in more detail of how that works. She did a presentation from Placeworks on the interactive web map. And I really recommend that if you do look at it, go to the part which says an instruction part first because it's, I went straight to the, like, I can just do this. And it's not as intuitive without the instructions and the instructions really help. So that's kind of what it looks like. You can use the little criteria to filter it down and and for whatever different reasons you have. So it's really helpful and it's a really huge first step. Now, we're talking about the next step. So one thing I really want to emphasize is that the Hape is a living document. It is not something that's meant to be shelved. It's going to be changing over time. We're going to be adding to it. We want it to be, continue to be a meaningful document. So we've outlined different goals, near term, midterm, and some of them are just ongoing. So for the upcoming year, we're looking at completing the housing sites and identifying the most suitable sites, creating a developer friendly atmosphere. I touched on that. I think it's really important for us in this very, this environment to say, you know, developers to want to come and have a good positive experience to continue to do work here in Lake County. We're looking at attaining the pro housing designation. I know Mariah and staff and Shannon and I have spent a lot of time at looking how we're going to pursue that. And then the creation of a housing rehabilitation program. And then you can see here, this is a lot. There's a lot here. Near term housing and midterm housing, really the full spectrum of housing here. Again, all types of housing that are going to take very different strategies. So I think for us to get our housing, we're going to, it's not one solution. There's going to be many solutions to get there. And that is my presentation and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
I'd just like to start off by looking at one of the charts, you know, senior housing and taking care of that older population. In one of these surveys, it was like older residents was like seventy four, almost seventy five percent. So once we find out what these, what the county is lacking in terms of like housing for these groups, finding the suitable areas to build these types of homes would then be like showcased in a way so that developers can come and and build something like that, like a housing for senior living and, or would the county be applying for grants and having these lands or these plots with, you know, you can apply to certain, you know, grants from the state if you get this portion of property. Is, would that be kind of how it would work?
We definitely will look at refining and what makes sense proximity, like for seniors, you're going to look at, you know, they need to have close proximity to services and things like that. Transportation can be an issue. So we definitely would look at that. As far as grants and funding, we're always on the move for grants and funding. What I have found to be in my experience here is that what we need is to have those projects in the pipeline. Because when the grant funding opportunities come down, if you don't have those in place, you're scrambling, you don't have the opportunity to get it. So we have some different mechanisms and strategies that are, we're putting in place so that we will have those notice of funding opportunities, things like that, potentially through, say, the Housing Trust Fund or through housing, so that we can get those ideas submitted. So then when the grants come, because they're not predictable right now as far as what we're going to get, so when they're there, we're ready, we're poised and we're strategically poised to go ahead and apply for those grants. And there's people in the community have already let us know that they're looking at doing this project.
No, and I think it's a very good first step into, you know, having this data to be able to use it for that purpose. So because if it wasn't there, then, you know, you'd be two steps behind.
Absolutely. And I think everything here in the Hape will help us when we do apply for those grants because we have it approved from the board that this is where they want to go and that we have the data here to support that kind of documentation that, you know, grants always want.
Thank you.
I just have a question. You mentioned the Housing Trust Fund. Say more about that, how that works and the funding mechanisms and?
Absolutely. So that was established in December, December of 2024, so recently, the Lake County Regional Housing Trust Fund. It's a collaboration between the city of Clear Lake, city of Lakeport and county of Lake. And so housing trust funds have been extremely efficient at producing housing. And it is flexible. There's different ways that you can obtain funding for it. Currently, it was established with $2 million for the Housing Trust Fund. And then I, we, we have the county applied for another, I think the PLHA funds, if you're permanent local housing fund, those allocation funds and then almost, I think it's 897, don't quote me on the change, but I think it's 421. So that's how we established it. And the cities are contributing on an annual basis and the county is contributing on an annual basis. And then we will be looking for supporters. So in other housing trust funds, there's different supporters. There's so many different ways that you can fund it down the road. Those might be opportunities for for different types of ways to support it and increase that funding. But it really is used as a leverage mechanism. So typically for larger projects, you see housing trust funds with like 10% of the capital stack will be from the Housing Trust Fund that leverages and makes that capital stack work. It could be for anything from rehabilitation. Really, we have a lot more flexibility than you see in a lot of grants, which are very stringent and specific. Although if we do get funding sources that are given, you know, that are put in that, we also have to look at that funding source to see if they have criteria. Right now, we have created the administrative guidelines for our administrative, we have the administrative board. Next step is to get our Board of Trustees that help make those funding decisions based off our administrative guidelines. And that should really help to incentivize, bring development into the county. And the nice thing is that we have the opportunity to prioritize what, what, you know, what is our strategy right now? What is the most important thing that we need? So I think that in the next, you know, in the future, you're going to see a lot more impact from that organization. It just was created last December. So it's kind of going through that initial, putting all the different pieces together. And that Housing Trust Fund will do things like do a NOFO where people submit project submissions. Or when we are ready to release funding, we'll put out a notice of funding availability so that different people can apply for that funding.
So it'd be a fun, excuse me, a funding partner for developers?
It could be developers and really, again, we have a lot of flexibility there, so.
And how does this interface with all the the new area plans and the, the eight area plans and the county overview? How does that all interface? We're in the process of putting that all together, looking at, you know, the various areas, what goes where and, you know, that kind of thing. How does this interface with that?
And that's an excellent question. And the Housing Trust Fund is built in the guidelines that are built on certain documents. The Hape is one of them, the RENA numbers, the city of Clear Lake and Lakeport. So all of that is considered when they're making those decisions.
I didn't just mean for the trust fund. I mean, just both of these documents in general, what is the, what is the interface? And and are the documents going to then go to the, those various committees just for information so that they know in perhaps making decisions for the the local area or the overall county, how these, these two, this plan affects whatever decisions or recommendations come out of that?
I think what you're asking is like, how much communication is it going to be given to those different entities? Is that?
Sure, that's part of it. You know, you know, as, so I live in Kelseyville. So as as we develop the plan for that area, how are the the findings and the recommendations from these two projects, might they affect? It seemed like they would because we're talking about housing. How would, how would the two entities work together to make sure that they're working in concert and not, you know, this group makes up some ideas, this group has some ideas, and maybe they're not meshed together?
I think it comes back to the guiding documents for, if you're talking about the Housing Trust Fund are, again, the, our regional housing needs allocation numbers. The Hape is one of the most important things and is a living document that can change. And that is based on, you know, input from the community itself. So that would be a way to interface.
Because if there, there are certain numbers, I think that Mariah had mentioned several months ago that the state may be giving or maybe already has given each one of the counties, the number of houses.
We just, yeah, those just came out.
Okay. You know, that that we would say in Kelseyville, need to know, we are required for, I don't know, 10 every year, that that we can then look at that requirement and then look at the plans as we're putting it together to say, okay, so we have 10. Where might those most optimally go depending on the data that we need, that we have in front of us?
I mean, I can't, so I'm not, can't speak on behalf of the administrative board for the Housing Trust Fund, but if you're talking about the Hape?
Yeah, I'm talking about, yeah, I guess there are too many, too many entities.
Right, yeah, they are separate, but the Housing Action Implementation Plan is something that we will update as needed. And we always encourage, you know, input. So if you're finding something that's missing or lacking or deeper insight, I would encourage you to share and email those to us. And again, it is a living document that we are, would like to keep up to date. And we want more than anything to hear that feedback that you know your area more than anyone else. And so it's really valuable information as we're making decisions.
Yeah, I'm just thinking on the ground floor of redoing our plans, it would behoove that that group to know what are some of these other plans that are being recommended or put in place for decision making?
Synergy, yes.
Well, there's the word. Thank you. So one more question. You showed a picture of of the the new builds right there by the Kelseyville Post Office. What is the, what's the genesis of those? Are those federal and are those available for the the credits that you were talking about or?
I would imagine, I don't know, is the answer. But I would, from every developer I've talked to, any of those multifamily subdivision, they can't build it without tax cred, the tax credits. So I would imagine that it was, and again, I don't know. So I'm just saying, I would, I would, it would be highly probable that it was using tax credits to build. But again, I don't know the specifics of that project. I just included that in the slide because it kind of showed in the construction phase and the finished phase.
When I saw the picture, it reminded me of a question, just because one of the the important groups that are the agricultural workers didn't know whether or not those units would be available for that particular group of folks and have very, and supports for renting.
So are you asking if there have ag units that are specifically designated for agricultural workers?
Right. I just, I have no idea if there is a criteria for for those particular units.
I don't know for those units. I do know that overall, I've seen in a couple of counties that the agriculture units, believe it or not, have been difficult to fill. And I think that comes to when we did like the ags. And I think that comes to when we did like the ag stakeholder community, just because sometimes they're, they're go by a federal income level. Which might, sometimes it, it is actually too, too low and, and so those people don't qualify. Or it could be from distrust if they have any undocumented people in their family. So there's a myriad of different reasons. But I've definitely been approached several times saying, we're having a hard time filling that housing component, which is, you know, frustrating.
I think, I think we both know the answer to this. It's because we have, as farmers, we provide housing to ag workers. Traditionally, we've had to.
Yeah.
And the other part is that if it's a federal federally made benchmark, very often. Farmer, farm workers in California don't qualify because they are paid more than on the, and so they, they simply don't qualify financially. Which is so unfortunate.
Agreed.
I, I can testify to that. I've actually had people want to work fewer hours for that reason.
I've seen it, I've seen it as well in the programs that I've run where they're like, they even quit work sometimes because otherwise their house is in jeopardy. So it, it's really an unfortunate.
One size doesn't always fit all.
Very true.
Thank you.
I have a comment and I'm not asking anybody specifically. I just kind of would like to open up this idea for discussion. As I was going through this document, I just kept asking myself, why are we so pro-development? We have nineteen percent vacancy rate. Why aren't we rehabilitating the housing that we have? And why aren't we, I mean, why are we destroying ag lands and environmentally original lands? To build more housing instead of rehabilitating and building up instead of out?
I love those questions. There's a lot that you just packed into those. Going forward, every seven to eight years, the housing element cycle, you know, we've mentioned the RENA numbers. The state is expecting us to continue to develop. It, it anticipates, it takes a look at a number of eye-crossing pieces of data about our community.
When you say the state, who are you referring to? The legislature or?
Yes. Yeah, the state puts out the Regional Housing Needs Assessment Numbers every housing element cycle. And it says, basically, the message to the jurisdiction is, we anticipate this amount of growth to need this housing. And we've also added in all the housing that you've lost in the, you know, the fires. And so over this next housing element cycle, we'd like you to, we'd like you to show us that you have the capacity to develop. What right now is on draft form, almost twenty-five hundred dwelling units in the next seven years. And how you go about it is, you know, we've got some, some helpful guidelines, some formulas and stuff like that, but just show us. So we can do it in a variety of ways. They break it down in the, in that twenty-five hundred numbers of households. They break it down and now to like, I think, six different economic levels of income. And so some of it, we can solve by single-family residential development. But you can't take a, an extremely low-income household and assume that it's gonna be developed in a single-family residential unit. So we have to respond to the state by showing different types of development. One of the ways that we can do that by demonstrating that is by increasing density in our existing communities. Which, as you are aware, does usually encounter some public pushback. So there's a lot of outreach and education that needs to go on for that sort of thing. And actually, it's kind of a change in culture. Which I will not jump into the weeds on that one, because that could be, it's an entire own conversation. So we are looking, the Hape looks at some of these different areas as great opportunities for multifamily residential or higher-density housing. But we're looking at all of the different types of housing development. And we do continue to grow because we are demanded to do so, because the state expects us to increase in our population. And, and so to be able to house these people, because what they want to avoid is what we already have, which is a housing crunch, not enough homes. Which causes multiple families to overcrowd into homes, causes homelessness in, in some aspects. Causes a lot of our families to leave here and move somewhere else. So the, the state wants to recover to the point such that we no longer are suffering under this burden of a, of a housing crunch. That is why we continue to look for opportunities to develop.
So what about that nineteen percent? What's going on there?
Nineteen percent vacancy rate actually sounds kind of low to me. I think the standard is higher, like normally in the twenties.
Yes, I think I read that.
And so that allows for like normal people to be able to have options to move. Or for your kids to please God, leave your house when they grow up, you know, and get homes of their own. That sort of a vacancy rate allows for an additional flexibility. And when you see it going down. What, what you can assume is that there's a little lack of flexibility in the, in the community that would be fixed. Or aided, supported, relieved if we could increase that vacancy rate. I'm kind of oversimplifying one because I don't really actually get it all, because you need to be like an actuary to, to get some of this data. But that's the gist of it as I understand it.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of discussions that I haven't been privy to. A lot of, I mean, the amount of work that's gone into this is just terrific. But as an outsider, I look at this and I think, wow, it's called the Community Development Department. Why isn't it called the Planning Department?
Well, it used to be.
Yeah.
We still see Planning Department in a lot of the old ordinances. That is just a simpler explanation that different jurisdictions will group different divisions or services into different departments and call them whatever they want. So our, our department is, encompasses three separate divisions, one of which is the Planning Division.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, one of which is Code Enforcement and then Building Safety.
Right.
In Sonoma, you'll get the Sonoma Permit Plus. And that has a combination of different things that that jurisdiction wanted to see all in one place. It's different in Mendocino, so.
Thank you.
My pleasure. I love talking about this stuff.
There's another topic that, I'm just curious, I didn't see anywhere discussion about transportation specifically. As everybody here probably knows by now, one of my pet peeves is there are not enough sidewalks or bicycle trails. And I see that the, the way people transport themselves is changing. So I'm wondering how much discussion or exploration went into that topic?
I, I would say that in our next presentation, Ben Rickelman, we'll probably be talking a little bit about those trails that you're talking about. And transportation, I think it's covered in there. One of the things that I think is frustrating for us is that a lot of the grants, you have to have like high transit sites. They're, they're kind of tailored towards these like larger metropolis, like, you know, and not rural. And so then sometimes we don't qualify, so that can be frustrating. But yeah, that's about all the discussion.
Okay, and I just wanted to comment that there's some discussion about reducing parking requirements. And I really think that's probably a good idea because we need to reduce our, so the other thing I wanted to ask. I guess, I guess I'll just wait till he.
I, I do want to say, one thing kind of might help is that this is a strategy playbook, right? So you go into the game, you have a playbook. You don't use every play. So this is a bunch of strategies depending on the situation at hand that we can use to employ when we need them and it makes sense. So, you know, with the parking, I've seen a lot of places where the, reducing the parking minimums has actually been really helpful and encouraged development. And we would look at it, we would want to look at that a little further depending on, on what we're looking at.
And one last question. I think I'm on page sixteen. The following barriers associated with existing Lakeport local land use regulations have been identified. There is a potential inconsistency with the R five zone and high-density residential. As the R five zone has a maximum density of nineteen point four units per acre. While the high-density residential general plan designation requires a product with a minimum of nineteen point four units per acre. Where did that number come up with? I mean, and can you explain, I, I just don't understand what.
I was totally distracted. Could you repeat that question? I'm sorry.
Oh, it's referring to the difference between the R five zone and high-density residential. And they have this nineteen point four units per acre as a minimum and as a maximum in the different zones.
I think Place Works.
We're correcting that? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Place Works was looking at the different things and they just noticed this like, this doesn't make sense. So they were just pointing it out as, this is something that, hey, like, you might want to look at this and possibly make that. We can't tell them to make a change, but you know, it's just, they looked kind of in-depth at the, at Lakeport and the county and Clear Lake's different zoning. To kind of find inefficiencies or something they would recommend to change. And that was one, which is probably just an oversight, you know, one of those verbiage things that just needs to be changed.
Okay, they call it a barrier, which might just be a polite.
We also call them governmental obstacles. When you're looking for, when you're looking for ways to encourage housing development. One of the, one of the typical exercises that we do in our housing element and similarly in the Hape. Is to examine the, the regulations that we have right now. Where is it, where is it impeding development and how can we improve it? So that was one of those identified. These are great questions. I'm excited.
Page fifty-one to fifty-two, I do not ever endorse short-cutting CQ review. But I, I need to go to that page, but I believe they exempt a whole bunch of different kinds of housing from CQ review.
You'll see that as a common theme at the state level as well, particularly housing next to mass transit opportunities. There, there, the, the state legislature is working on lowering governmental obstacles. And they consider CQ review to be one of those in some instances.
That's terrible.
A question, when you referred to the legislature putting out their housing forecasting, how often, how often is that? Is that, is that an annual thing? Is it biannual? Is it every five years? I, I'm not familiar with it.
I, the, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, I think it's every seven years, right? Every seven years.
And so when was that, when was the last one?
It was for our sixth cycle housing element. So it would have been about six or seven years ago, because we're just dealing with the draft numbers right now.
So, so a new one is, is sort of due up?
Yes.
There's a draft right now.
Jurisdictions are gearing up for the seventh cycle housing element timeline.
Cause just as a, as a anecdotal observation, in Sonoma County, they're just building apartments like crazy. Which is curious because they are collapsing school districts because they're losing students. So that sort of seems like, you know.
Like a chicken or the egg thing.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, and then certainly as you drive down to the Sacramento Airport, also planting apartment buildings like crazy. So just, just, just an interesting observation when, when, you know, we're given a certain number. There's a lot of that building going on. And I referenced the, the two large apartment buildings by the Kelseyville Post Office. So there's a lot happening. And to, to Miley's point of twenty percent vacancy. I don't know that all those apartments are, well, some of them aren't even ready for occupancy, but are, are all filled. And so that's sort of a wonderment. Maybe we've already reached our quota and, and we just haven't, we just haven't counted everybody.
Nice try. I wish that were so.
Well.
Make our jobs easier.
You are not alone in that thought.
Anecdotal observation.
Their RENA numbers are way higher than ours, too.
Oh, I'm sure they are.
They may be trying to satisfy their numbers as well. And they have the demand and the developers want to develop there. You know, the, the return, the, the ability, the, the abilities in order to develop the housing is there. We'd love to see a similar push or interest in developing in any of our jurisdictions in Lake County. We don't have them banging down our doors.
So given what we know about what you're just saying, the obstacles and the challenges with building here in Lake County. Then what, what are, are our ideas for streamlining building? And for making some changes or identifying exactly the type of, of housing that would, so to speak, pay off? To, to be built here in, in Lake County?
Good question. So in the Lake County two thousand and fifty process, as I think we may have discussed before. We sent out a question in the countywide beginning, like looking for key issues things, assessing the feel for mixed use. Adding some commercial as, as a more commonly used option in, for residential development as well. That was resoundingly supported throughout the county. Not necessarily what you'll see in like Auburn or something, you know, with those malls and then these hundreds of houses. But more of a Lake County style, like a, a one or two or three apartments next to a supermarket or above a pizza place or things like that. The public really liked that idea because one of our priorities in Lake County are to have our walkable neighborhoods. And to have our communities that are self-sustaining, so that we don't always have to drive a half an hour to get to like a Walmart or, you know, we can, we can shop within our own little neighborhoods. Other things we're looking at, which could help us towards the pro-housing designation, which is a, a carrot that the state is holding out, has held out for a number of years. Would be to take a look at these communities. Are there corner parcels where maybe the community would be accepting of a triplex? Or a duplex or are setbacks a little bit, so that we can allow for additional land that is usable within a certain-sized parcel? There are a number of things that we're taking a look at that are just sort of incremental little tweaks to what we have right now. That would still enable us to retain our rural character, but increase the options for development. Additionally, we are in the middle of setting up meetings right now with professionals in the fields of, actually varied, varied fields of development. To get their input. These are guys who are trying to make it through our planning counter or building counter all the time. What do you see that we could improve? Because for me, I can look at the zoning ordinance, the general plan, local area plans and, and, and look for changes there. But these are the guys that are actually getting stuff done. And so we're gathering input from various stakeholders and interested parties. So that we will then be able to furnish a relevant and accurate and a timely list of where, where are these governmental obstacles? That we can fix. And let's take a look at those, so.
And I know that in the Hape, we, we did talk to several developers and really got their feedback. And they're looking for, they want to know the expectations upfront, so there's not hidden things as they're going. That, that's what gives them a good experience is clear communication, clear expectations. We're looking at doing, right now, designing currently, you'll hear in the next thing, housing webpage regarding a developer portal. And there was a need for, you know, besides clear expectations and communication, things like having a contact person. So they're not all over the county trying to do the things, helping someone guide through that process. So anything that we can do to say, you know, we want you to be here and, and, and make it easier for the developers. They're gonna have a positive experience and they're gonna want to build here again. So we're looking at a lot of different things from developer incentives to developer portal to a contact person. You know, we're looking at a lot of different strategies so that we can incentivize that.
Great. Thank you. And so into that point, Mariah, the, as you were saying, that you had a lot of public input in regard to mixed-use development. But that's what I wonder, you know, with the developer, is that what the developer will look at? Cause I understand from the little bit of conversations I've had with developers also is that they are looking for, they need to. Here in Lake County, we don't have the same price point, and that's one of the reasons why we're very attractive to consumers who want to move here and buy. Because of our lower price point and more land for, you know, more bang for the buck. But on the other hand, for the developer, the cost of supplies and materials doesn't pay out if they can't charge a certain price point at, for the end product. And so, you know, where is the, you know, value there, you know, for quantity? So it's always been about quantity, price and timeliness.
Sure.
Anyway.
Opening up the option for limited mixed-use with, or limited residential development with commercial. As well as coupling that with the building plans that we already have offered for, for free mind, might. might end up with the option of a property owner, who's not a developer, having the opportunity then to develop some housing on a commercial parcel in an affordable manner, which would then actually add to their revenue source for renters at that property. So, we're looking at a variety, it's, it's, it's a complex, lots of moving parts to try to offer as many options to appeal to both developers that are in existence and in operation right now, as well as property owners who may want to take advantage of that opportunity for their own parcel.
I think you, you just hit a point I've been trying to figure out how to say, you did it much more articulately than I could. But I was wondering, as, you know, the world has really changed in the last 20 years. We order things. We don't go down to the corner store and, and purchase them anymore. So I'm thinking about how that commercial space is, it's, maybe it's not being used anymore, or it's being used in a different way. Like, if I'm one of those old people who goes to Safeway and actually looks at the vegetables and makes a decision, and, and I see that, through filling orders, all the time. There's a lot of people not grocery shopping anymore. So I'm wondering about how that space might be more efficiently used? I mean, do they need to put all those things out on display and have people run through with cart? Do you know what I'm saying? Things are changing. So, I, the, the project that comes to mind is this, tribal health is moving into the bowling alley. And those kind of projects, I think, are, I mean, I know it's the city of Lakeport, so it's not really our venue, but there's a lot of commercial space, in other words, land that has already been paved over, that I would like to see developed for housing before I see ground broken, that has been untouched.
As a government jurisdiction, it behooves us to offer all kinds of options. So that, because it, over time, the funding sources change for different types of development as well. Like lately, we've had a lot of funding for multifamily transitional or supportive housing. That's where the money's been. But that's not to say that that's where it will be two to three years, five years from now. And so we are in constant communication, community development, land use planning, the housing office down in administration. Ben Rickelman is, is continually kind of weaving threads together for economic development of different types. It's, it's a moving playground, you know, and so our job is to navigate and not hold things back that the community wants. However, not hold things back while maintaining the community's vision. That general plan and those local area plans are always with us. And the community in Lake County really prize our rural character. So we keep that in mind as well.
So, to Miley's point, point about buil, building new and having vacancies, is there a way to incentivize, rather than build new, to take advantage of what is already existing? I know Kelseyville goes through, you know, sort of cycles of having all the, their business space full and then sometimes not, and I'm sure Lakeport does the same thing. But, but how can we incentivize, rather than build something new, some other place, infill? And maybe that's not the exactly correct word.
That's the exact right word.
Oh, righty. To infill, and so, and then it keeps the character of the community. If, just scenario of half the, 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 the commercial space in Main Street on Lakeport is empty, but somebody wants to build a little strip mall, you know, just, you know, down the block, that, that doesn't continue to support the character of a, an inviting rural town. So is there some sort of incentive, so that, you know, we're just not building new, but leaving, leaving the rest of the, you know, stuff unfilled? We are, we struggle enough with, with keeping our, our business space filled. Because it, it's tough to be a small business person, well, anywhere, but certainly is, I know, in Lakeport and Kelseyville. So it's, it's, it's that, thinking about infill, and then moving from the business into the housing, the whole Cobb area, I don't, I don't know what percentage of rebuild has happened after the fire. Yeah, I knew, I knew you would know this. You know, there's, I talk about housing, there, there's some beautiful sites that are just vacant.
About 30%.
30%, thank you. And so, again, rather than find a new spot to build new, let's look at what we've got already in place. And, and I think perhaps, I don't want to put words in Miley's mouth, but when she was asking about the, the planning department versus the community development, maybe we need to look at a little more planning of, of what we, of the, of our landscape right now, and be mindful in, in that regard.
It's a best practice in planning to encourage infill versus sprawl.
And, and that was identified in the Hape as one of the top priorities, that we agree that infill is something that we'd like to focus on.
Which is another reason why we're really excited that the community supports additional mixed-use options.
Well, your presentation was fabulous. I wonder if it would be available to be emailed to, to us? There were some things up there that a lot of text, and I couldn't read it.
Absolutely. It was, it was a lo, a lengthy presentation originally. And I'm, I'm more than happy to share those slides, and also, Maria and I both, you can email us. We both worked very hard on, on, on this together, so feel free to email us if you have ideas, thoughts, anything, because sometimes those come later.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if, if this is in the plan or not, but, but talking about interfacing and knowing you had made the comments as far as streamlining, and so that all expectations are known ahead of time for developers and, and all of that. We, we had a, a situation here, very recent, which, which was just a single-family home, but where one of the surprise expenses, of course, was the hookups for infrastructure. So is there an interface in this plan with regard to that in consideration for, as you talk about different, you know, looking at different housing sites, and what is, and another question I have is, what is the ideal housing site? And how can we make all of those expenses or those, those added infrastructure costs relatable to the building sites that perhaps are targeted for development?
I think that as far as the individual sites, that would be, if Maria could answer that, it's not detailed out in the Hape as far as individual building sites. But certainly, streamlining overall, the permitting process and, and all of that is one of the strategies for housing, which would include single sites. But as far as, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Maria?
Well, in some instances, the board will authorize a deferral of payment of connection fees. But, the, yeah, they are, they are in contact with special districts regarding capacities, abilities for growth. Infrastructure can be a curbing criteria for development. And so that is, that is why the board has to take a look at that when they're developing policy as far as where are we investing public funds for capacity increase or expansion right now? Where are we going in the future? LAFCO takes a look at that with their municipal service reviews. The communities, our LAPACs took a look at that when they were looking at land use designation changes or community growth boundary adjustments as well. So it's, it's a, it's a complex issue that actually requires a lot of community-based visioning, which then follows up with the, the deciding bodies.
And I think you just answered the question of how the area plans and the general plan then interface with.
Exactly. Yeah, our, our job is to first and foremost make sure that we are aware of and are implementing the community's vision. It can't be Maria's version of the world, you know, nobody's voted me king. So it's really important to have that LAPAC and that public interaction.
I'd just like to add, you know, collaboration is key, and I'm happy to hear that there's a lot of collaboration taking place in, in, within this document. And, and one of the things that I think we all, all agree on, and I don't want to belate about building, building up versus building out, but I think there's good input that's been gathered. The community's vision is being captured. And the only thing I think I, I'm concerned about when I hear streamlining, what, what does that look like? You know, what all is going to be involved in the streamlining process? And what is maybe the county doing to support developers in terms of maybe some of the environmental pieces that can be done within, by the county, such as like cultural resource assessments or, or those types of things that could be done prior to an applicant or developer coming here and having to do all that extra work? So those are the things I think I'm interested in, how, how do we do that? How does the county support developers? And then looking at all those pieces where they can be streamlined without removing parts of the environmental process. So those are things I'm thinking about, and just wanted to add that comment.
Thank you. That is, that's a really good idea. Although we are always looking to streamline, we do so with our constant priorities still in mind. And one of those top priorities is preservation of cultural resources, which in Lake County are pretty much everywhere. So that, that is not something that we are willing to set aside for development or lowering of that particular, I wouldn't even deem that a government obstacle. I would deem that a, a protection of what's important to our community.
One more question. Are there definitions of the, you had given a list of different types of housing? Are there definitions for those different types of housings found? And then a follow-up question on that, again, with the interface with area plans in, in the different communities, how can that correlate to individual communities? And perhaps their definition of those individual housing types might vary?
So, very good point. The Board of Supervisors did request a definitions to be added to the Hape. So we're working on that for you, and so I can send that out when we complete that. You have a lot of good points. I like the one about the people here building and the return for developers, and then people wanting to come here to Lake County because it's lower for housing cost. So that is something we're looking at, too.
Also, I lost track if it's in the Hape or if it's part of Lake County 2050, but we did have a goal or an implementation task of, of going to the community and getting community input when identifying some of these higher-density sites. Because if we can get ahead of it and work with the community for that unified vision, then serve as a streamlining aspect to housing development in the future. Because we won't then, like, blindside our community and, and have them go, what the heck are you talking about, this, you know, housing development here? Why, who thought that was a good idea, you know? So we're, we're pivoting, because just to, to be able to share that community vision and have all of our, our, our public, our developer and, and government boats kind of row in the same direction. So when an opportunity may arise, we've already laid the groundwork there.
I just want to thank county staff. I know that they've put in a lot of hours catering to the needs of the community, rather than their own business schedules, and a lot of those meetings were not between nine and five. So just thank you.
Well, gear yourself up, because we're coming back for another cycle when we have the public review for Lake County 2050. Sorry, this isn't even on the agenda item. But, but we're going to do it again in the beginning of the year. So this is just a shout-out to the public, that we're going to be looking for that input on our draft documents as they're going forward, to make sure that we're not making stuff up, that we're actually reflecting the community's vision.
Do we need to open this to the public?
I'd like to open up public, a public comment for this item 7A. If you wish to speak, you'll be given three minutes, members of the public hearing chambers. I'll take a look in the room first, seeing none. We do have one or two. All right, so we'll take people here in the chambers first, and then we'll take a look at Zoom.
Good morning, Chair Chavez, Planning Commissioners and Staff, Margot Cambara. Thank you, Commissioners, especially Commissioner Field and Zoller, for voicing community values of trying to preserve the nature of the rural nature of our community in open spaces, and also questioning some of the orientation of the Hape, and that is being pro-development. Our housing needs as a community and as a state and nation are great. Meeting the state's expectations and being pro-development as described by Commissioner Field is not mutually exclusive. Similarly, focusing on infill area, as Commissioners Zoller and Field have pointed out, offers a lot of opportunity. We don't have to sacrifice our open spaces and undisturbed lands to meet our obligations to our unhoused neighbors. So thank you for standing up for that, and thank you, Director Turner, for reminding everybody that the general plan is our constitution, and it holds us accountable to our values, and we should not forget that. So thank you so much. I would also like to give you a brief update, and that is the Lake County Board of Supervisors, when it approved the Hape, Board Chair Crandall also introduced draft ordinance on rate, rent stabilization for seniors and residents with disabilities, primarily for those who live in mobile home parks. The Board of Supervisors also created an ad hoc committee to find solutions for vulnerable residents on fixed incomes who need rent stabilization protection. It may not be known that vulnerable residents in mobile home parks need help now. Residents fear retaliation for speaking out on practices and conditions in their mobile home parks. Lake County, I'm sorry, Lake County Departments can provide tremendous service to those residents by highlighting resources available now, such as an ombudsman to affected residents. Also, it is important for vulnerable residents to have a safe way to provide input to the ad hoc committee and agencies that shield them from retaliation. Resolving the conflict between profit motive and vulnerable population's need for stable rent may prove extremely difficult. In terms of solution, the rent stabilization ad hoc committee may wish to examine the concept of a nonprofit organization purchasing land or leasing land at low cost and operating a mobile home park. This nonprofit could also operate the park on donated land, for example, county-owned land. There are other ideas. Chair Crandall's and the ad hoc committee's attention to the housing issues of vulnerable seniors and residents with disabilities who live in mobile home parks is heartening. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone in the chambers wishes to come up? No one in the chambers, we'll take a look at the Zoom room. And we don't have any hands in the Zoom room, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission. See if there's any further discussion on this item before we move on to our 7B. All right, well, thank you, staff, for this presentation today for our 7A items. So we'll move on to 7B, Presentation of Update on County Economic Development and Housing Initiatives.
Chair Chavez, would you mind taking a five-minute break?
Yep. So we'll, hello? So we're going to take a five-minute break while we get the presentation going, so we'll be back in five.
Chair Chavez, would you mind taking a five-minute break? Chair Chavez, would you mind taking a five-minute break?
Chair Chavez, would you mind taking a five-minute break?
Chair Chavez, would you mind taking a five-minute break? Chair Chavez, would you mind taking a five-minute break? Chair Chavez, would you mind taking a five-minute break?
We're going to continue our meeting with a presentation for item 7B, Presentation of Update on County Economic Development and Housing Initiatives.
Good morning Commission. My name is Ben Rickelman. I'm a Deputy County Administrative Officer with Concentrate on Economic Development here with Lisa Judd, also a Deputy County Administrative Officer, concentrates on housing. This is a highlight of different projects and initiatives we're working on. So there's a lot listed here, but this is kind of a high-level overview. We're close to launching an independent website for economic development and housing with the county. It'll have several different features. A good chunk of it is explaining resources for people looking to start a business and have a business, what's out there to support them. We're going to have a projects map that highlights high-level projects, both in the unincorporated areas of Lake County and then also Clear Lake and Lakeport. We're going to have a section highlighting, as discussed somewhat in the previous item, potential areas of development. So we're going to show that too. We have a communities map that is a stylized map, the same artists who put together the maps for the recently relaunched Canocdi Trails website. And we're going to have kind of explanatory text and images about the, I guess I would call it the economic development universe here in Lake County, the different supporting organizations like the Economic Development Corporation, Community Development Services in Kelseyville, what they do. Also, what are the different programs out there at both the state and federal level? And then on the housing side, the Hape will be featured. Well, also as Lisa was discussing, the development tool, the site selection tool and explanatory text on how to use it. And then also an overview of the county's housing initiatives, including the Housing Trust Fund.
Before you go on, do you mind unwrapping your acronyms?
Sure. When I go to each item, I'll explain the acronym. I think that might be easier. I'm working with three departments that do most of the capital projects here with the county government, Public Works, Public Services, and Special Districts. So the county has done capital spending on a year-to-year basis. So looking to get all realistic capital projects that could happen in the future, have them deciphered out into individual project sheets. And then that will be collated into a capital improvement plan, which can then be used for strategic planning. So people know, including the Board of Supervisors, what is the potential universe of projects in the future? And that can then also coordinate with the general plan and the local area plan in the future. Another thing is a project, energy costs here is a huge issue for both residents and businesses. I know a few small businesses that have closed because of the cost of energy. We have the second highest energy rates in the country. And so an idea is putting out an RFQ to see with different microgrid solutions for commercial corridors. There's some funding mechanisms out there that's kind of like the one to two megawatt, which is kind of those would serve a good-sized commercial corridor in Lake County. So we'll see if there's interest for people to partner with us. It could, we'll see with the change in federal tax credits with renewable energy, what the appetite is out there, but it can't hurt to put an RFQ out.
And an RFQ is?
For qualifications. So it's less tailored than an RFP where you're kind of looking narrowed in on a specific project. We're looking more for partners that could work in certain areas. The Heart Hub, Health, Education, and Regional Training is a broad project with many partners. The Economic Development Corporation at the moment is the lead agency. Sutter and Adventist and Tribal Health are all participating. And also all the school districts here in Lake County. So this is envisioned to be a simulation lab that is both continuous workforce education for people within the healthcare industry at the moment, but then also with students. So they're developing curriculum, I believe, from fifth through 12th grade. So it'll be an experiential space and they'll be exposed to a lot of healthcare careers that they might not have familiarity with. So, you know, everyone thinks of doctors and nurses, but there's a bunch of other opportunities in the space. It's healthcare and social service is our largest employment sector in the county and also has the largest economic output. And for a county of sixty, roughly 68,000 to have three medical systems here is pretty unique. The state of California has a community development block grant, CDBG, and then a notice of funding opportunity. Basically, you can apply for the money. We are what they call a non-entitlement community, which basically means it's competitive. We're not guaranteed any funds, but when the NOFA comes out, we do plan to apply. One of our plans is a facade improvement program. So this would be for small businesses to improve the outside of their establishment that's facing the public right ways, on the main road drag. And the, the program would pay for about 90 to 95% of it. So it'd be basically a grant program for facade improvements. Another idea is we do have currently a micro-enterprise program that's funded through CDBG. So re-upping that program and that's aimed at individuals' kind of basic business skills. So it can mean anything from accounting to marketing to basic business structure. So people that are looking to start a business are who run what we call a micro-enterprise, so just a few employees. And then we do offer through Community Development Services, a low-interest, long-term loan program for small, qualified small businesses. So that was of great use during the pandemic. And they also work with local banks to help structure loans. And usually these loans just have a 1% rate. Another program we're looking to launch is, which was kind of touched on the housing conversation, but California has the highest impact fees in the country. Lake Counties are not nearly as high as some jurisdictions, especially in the Bay Area, but they can still be considerable. So this would be a fee deferral program primarily, I think, since we don't have some of the other impact fees other jurisdictions have, but there is sometimes considerable sewer and water impact fees. So they would still have to pay it. It would just be structured over maybe four or five years. So that would just be kind of a 25% upfront. And so the idea is it makes it attractive because the property would be generating revenue where they're paying most of these fees. And then I'll let Lisa take over for the housing projects.
I think we covered the housing action and implementation plans. I think you know about that. There's still work to do again on completing the housing site analysis. We have this just enormous list that we would like to further refine and make it as useful as possible. I touched already in the Hape on creating a developer-friendly atmosphere and the different strategies that we can employ. And that's definitely something that I'm working on. There was also some talk about the pro-housing designation as well. And right now it is an incentive. So if you attain that pro-housing designation, then there's certain funding that you can apply for. I think down the road, it's most likely going to be something that's a requirement. So it's something that we can pursue now. Most of the pro-housing, there's like four categories and you have to have a certain number of points. So we're able to pick and choose the things that we really want to pursue that make sense for here in Lake County. Again, kind of goes hand-in-hand with a developer-friendly atmosphere because a lot of it is streamlining the process and making it easier for folks so that we can have, attract more housing in the county. I also touched on this as well, creation of a housing rehabilitation program. It's a huge need for this and it's, it's a big task, but I'm really excited to kind of dig in and, and look and see how we can make that happen. And then we also touched again on the Lake County Regional Housing Trust Fund. That is in, it is established and we're working through the next steps for that. So I think that you're going to be seeing a lot come from that for the Housing Trust Fund in the near future to also incentivize housing and support our community. And I wish I had it with me, but their, their mission, it definitely is partly about preserving the rural character of our community. So I just wanted to share that as well.
So this is just a bit more detail about the projects I mentioned. So we're wrapping up the design work for the website. The individual departments are filling out the project sheets, wrapping up the RFQ. The Heart Hub is a long-term project, so we did receive funding through State Economic Development Program called the Catalyst Fund through Redwood Region Rise. So I believe it was around 800,000. But this is going to take, and they've received some funds from Sutter, and I believe from one of the districts and then from Sonoma State. But it's a substantial project. It's going to be several million. They do have a lease which Sutter financed, which is greatly appreciated. That is across from Sutter Lakeside, the hospital. It's in that strip of medical office buildings. It's about 6,000 square feet. So the space is being demoed at the moment. And we are looking for funding opportunities for the build-out and also equipment. So this is just a bit more on the economic development website, which I touched on. I think it'd be a great way just to feature what's happening in the county and kind of what is the development process here, which the previous item, kind of talking about the complication. I will say just working in other states and DC, this is by far the most complicated entitlement and permitting system. So demonstrating that we want to be proactive and be a partner, I think demonstrates a lot of value. This is just additional photos. And, but this kind of touches on two industries we'll be highlighting. So agriculture with scaly packing. And there's a great report that just came out explaining both the value of crop production, but also the, the processing and the economic impact of that. And I believe the overall was around 300 million. So it's a significant part of the local economy. The workforce development, we will also have a section on that. So that's the cuisine program at Woodland College on the Clear Lake campus. And then clean energy, which we have seen an increased interest. It's Calpine. They are wrapping up a project at about 25 megawatts to their production at the Geysers. They did put in two long battery, large battery storage systems. And there's just also what they call enhanced geothermal systems. There's increased interest and we see it also in the market, what utilities are willing to pay for 24-hour clean energy. So there could be increased movement in that space. This is just an overview of the project sheet for the Capital Improvement Plan, the CIP, what the departments are working on. So it breaks down the fiscal outlay by year and also provides information on location and timeframe of project in both pre-development and construction. This is just a battery storage system for a small microgrid system. This is just a bit more covering on the Heart Hub. So we are going to go after Economic Development Administration funding. Um, so we are gonna go after Economic Development Administration funding shortly for equipment and supplies. Um, but a lot of this training now is on these very sophisticated mannequins. Um, and everything from kind of people just entering the healthcare field to continual education for um, experienced practitioners. And the purple rectangle is where the facility is planned. So the hospital is north of it and then on the other side of the parking lot. It's attention um, with the recent reconciliation bill. Um, Opportunity Zones Program, which currently in Lake County is two census tracts in Clear Lake. And so basically this is a way to encourage private investment. Through the federal tax code um, by rolling over capital gains and then their tax treatment. If they go into qualified investments in OZs, Opportunity Zones. For when it was re-upped in the reconciliation bill, they provided some modifications that make it more advantageous to invest in rural areas, which all of Lake County qualifies for. Um, so step up in basis, um, that's basically just. Like if you inherit a house and let's say the valuation of that house with the previous occupant increased from three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, and then you sell that house at five hundred and fifty thousand. You're only taxed on that increase of capital gains from that five hundred to five hundred and fifty thousand. That two hundred thousand you're currently exempted from in the federal tax code, that's a hundred percent step up in basis. Um, so if there's investments here in a rural area, you have a thirty percent to ten percent. And then another interesting tweak is currently with the Opportunity Zone Program. You have to um, have a hundred percent improvement with investment, so that usually means new construction. For the most part, unless it's a really extensive renovation. Uh, but now in rural areas, um, it can be a fifty percent substantial improvement. So that would qualify um, some renovation projects, so it could be an existing structure. So um, the governor's office chooses for the qualified census tracts. You can choose up to twenty-five percent of them as OZs and the qualification is based on income. And so um, there'll be advocacy to the governor's office and there still has to be a discussion about what census tracts to look at. This was um, recent legislation change a few months ago regarding um. Sequo exemption for certain infill housing developments. Um, it's mostly just in Lakeport and Clear Lake. There is an exemption for very high fire risk severity zones. So if you remember those maps CalFire put out recently with the red, um, those don't count. And there was also um, through SB one thirty-one, the budget bill a few months ago, certain sequo exemptions for um, different community development projects and also um, high-end manufacturing. And also a wildfire mitigation and broadband. And we already covered this in the previous item. Uh, that's all I have at the moment, I'm happy to take any questions.
Do we have any questions for this presentation?
No, I just want to thank you very much and I, my only concern was about this SB one thirty-one and I don't, I don't think we at this level have any answers, so thanks.
So I will say on that, um, you can look at the legislation. They, they do have requirements you have to follow to qualify for the exemption. Um, so usually there's um, everyone I've seen has tribal outreach. Um, and then there's usually several other ones, it kind of just depends because they were all individual pieces of legislation and they were kind of bundled together. Um, so it variates a little bit, but all of them have um, pretty extensive qualifications to qualify.
Could you just say a little more about the workforce development program and, and how that operates and, and the partners that, that you were mentioning?
Sure, um, so we have two community colleges here with campuses um, that are pretty important to the workforce development system. Yeah, we have the North Bay Workforce Alliance. Um, and so they did operate a career center here that was closed recently, so I hope that reopens. Um, but they do a fair amount kind of placing people in um, initial points of employment. We do with the Economic Development Corporation, um, they do a good amount of um, free business counseling. So they're part of um, what they call the Small Business Development Center Network. Um, which is a nationwide network funded primarily by the federal government. And so they have people that are experienced in certain parts of business operations or certain industries where they provide free one-on-one counseling. Um, so that's useful. Um, we do have with the school districts here, the CTE programs. Um, and that's being thought of and incorporated to also with the Hart Hub. With the, two of the school districts here have CTE pathways that directly connect with that.
So I asked, I asked in particular because we recently approved a large project down there, uh, South County, the Gwinoc Project. And they talked a lot about uh, working with the current uh, workforce development uh, programs uh, because they're going to be needing lots of folks. And so I just uh, wondered if you'd had that connection or I'm sure you're already aware of it, but it was a, quite a bit of a conversation during our approval process.
Yeah, um, so I've connected with the development a few other ways, um, not with workforce yet, but. Excuse me, I think with especially the middle towns, CTE programs, that's a good point of emphasis, but it's just a large development, I think, um, especially the Kelseyville School District, connecting them. And uh, setting up the appropriate CTE pathways is important. And then um, with Woodland College with their hospitality program, uh, making sure there's that connectivity there.
How does that interface happen? I just, I, I don't know.
Um, I was, in the past, it's sometimes just kind of one-on-one with the project. You can also set up workforce programs. I mean, that does require personnel then kind of like a full-time employee working on that. Um, but I think with Gwinoc, because it's large enough and unique enough, I think there should be buy-in at the school districts and Woodland to set up kind of a formal partnership.
Fabulous, thank you.
I think when we look into um, like these projects, uh, I think it's obviously very important to. Look at the youth and the people, for example, like you said, um, pro- uh, programs in the community colleges. To be able to have those trainings, try to guide those, you know, soon to be, you know, when they graduate. That they have these um, you know, trainings with how to manage a business, how to, you know. Uh, you, you spoke about um, like accountants and you know, that kind of training. Because that's, that's like, you're, you're getting the people that are like, you know, getting ready to go out to the world to, so that they don't, you know, leave Lake County and then having those opportunities here. They can start their businesses here and, and develop, you know. If they do well, then the economy here does well too. So I think having programs like this uh, coming up is a um, is a great idea. It's a good step in the right direction for, for Lake County and, you know, I'm just looking forward to, to seeing these things. Uh, I think, well, a lot of people talk about the lack of opportunity here in Lake County. Uh, but I think it starts with these programs, uh, because now you have the opportunity, it's posted. It's going to the people that are actually going to take advantage of it in, in a, you know, positive way. And just training the youth, because they're the ones that are going to be living in these developments, having their shops in these developments that we're talking about. Uh, um, and then, you know, essentially raising their families here. So, uh, you know, I think we've, we've been moving in the right direction, but it's, it's obviously, it takes a lot of work and I'm glad that you guys are out here educating us and educating the public um, to what's coming, so, thank you.
A couple of questions. Uh, one, can you expand a little bit more on the cost of energy in small businesses? Because as you indicated or whatever it is, that is, does play a big, big role in impacts our small businesses. Um, as you stated, a couple, you know that a couple businesses closed because of that.
Yeah, so energy is mostly a fixed cost. Now there are, the PG&E does have programs that can talk with you. You know, you can do certain operations, so you're not at peak times, you're not charged as much. But if you're running a restaurant, you know, you have to have the AC on and running the kitchen when people are there and that's primarily during the evening or lunchtime, which is kind of peak energy used and you're going to be charged the most. Um, so there's only, you know, there's certain things you can do on the edges depending your business type, but it's, it's a major issue and especially in a rural area where you just don't have the volume of customers. And so you have this fixed energy cost, but then the revenue you're taking in is moderate, so you have thin margins. And so there's a few businesses I know that have made the decision just not to operate because um, they're barely making money because of the energy costs. Um, where I moved from Texas, uh, at the residential rate, it's about three times as much, three and a half times as much uh, per kilowatt hour. And then I know for large power users, it's substantially more here in California too.
So I guess this will segue into kind of where I was thinking, the microgrids, how does that offset any potential costs to small business owners? And is that currently something that's being used here in the county?
Um, so some of the larger institutional uh, businesses and. Um, so like the hospitals have their own solar arrays and so that helps them a lot and yeah, that makes it much cheaper. Um, you do have the issue with small business, a lot of them don't own their properties and they're not there. For, they can't guarantee they're going to be there for like twenty years to repay a system. So that's unlike, like a residential solar array battery system. Uh, most people, people put those in because they know they'll make their money back in the long term. So that's where the idea of a community microgrid comes in. We also, I should have mentioned, another thing that we're going to apply for with the CDBG uh, funding, whenever that comes out is a microgrid analysis. So looking at specifically quantifying the benefits for certain commercial corridors. Um, so yeah, it, it can make a huge difference if we can figure out some way to finance it.
Um, you also mentioned, and I know this isn't, this isn't part of the county, uh, but the agency that we do work with is the North, North Bay Workforce Alliance. You mentioned that they closed the facility, that, that's sad. So, so do we not have a presence here? And, and what impact are we feeling from that? Because I know North Bay uh, Work Alliance, you know, worked before if a, if a business closed down, you know, uh, working with re-employment of those folks that had lost their job or also they could play a big role, a huge role in this Gwinoc uh, project coming forward, also offering training, so anyway.
Uh, so I believe it was, it's more just a real estate issue. Um, it was at uh, the larger office space down by the lake there on First Street, um, which has pretty high rent. Um, and it's been an issue for several other tenants there too. Uh, so I, I can't say for certainty, but I think they are looking for a new space here. Um, so they're not going away, um, Lake County is part of their mandate, it's one of the counties they cover. Um, so I think it's going to be more of a temporary issue, they'll eventually find space.
And, and then along the same lines is um, I am familiar with a program that was, I believe, offered through perhaps the North Bay Work Alliance and in partnership with the North Coast Builders Association for construction.
Yes.
Destruction jobs, anything going on here in Lake County at all in that regard?
Yes, uh, the build program is running. Um, it is a workforce development program, you don't need any construction experience. Um, it's on-the-job training. Um, you are paid an hourly rate and then the idea is you will transition uh, full-time to the construction industry. They do both rehab and single-family home construction. Uh, I mean, it's a fairly small output, but I believe they're on their fifth cohort now. They recently were awarded um, three hundred thousand dollars through CDBG. So um, that's great news and from what I've heard, it's been a great program for the community.
I was just going to add for the build program, it's their North Coast Opportunities. So if you would like to find um, any more information about that, you can, I'm on their board, so. Um, and they did get a solar chill project, which is going to uh, have solar that will also um, provide um, air conditioning to homes in Lake County as well as heat. So it's like one of those um, unit that does the, thank you. I forgot the name, Mini Split, so they, they do have that project um, going as that will be, you'll be seeing here in Lake County as well, so. Um, if you ever get the opportunity, they have their build graduations, they're really inspirational.
Thank you.
Just a comment or just an observation regarding like microgrids. Um, I know that the state has uh, requirements or that any new construction after like twenty nineteen, they required to have, like homes to have solar installed on the roofs. Um, if something similar like that could be done in fertile areas where the high energy, where there's high energy use, um, having essentially those communities or those uh, uh, commercial zones with, you know, obviously the investments and, and how you get these funds, I mean, it's just a question or. Uh, it would be like having, making them powerhouses, having batteries on the buildings. So when they're generating all that use in the day, uh, you know, the sun's out, the solar panels are on the roof and then they actually, they're actually holding it and not just feeding it straight into the grid. Essentially those areas could become like self-sufficient in a way. Um, but it just, you know, it's just a vision. Uh, every single project is, you know, could be privately owned, but I think having the discussion of, you know, where the future is and, and the energy use that's going to, or the price of energy that's going to keep going up. Having the storage of the, of the energy there. Um, and then it'll also take off the, the strain of like when everyone gets home and everyone's turning on their ACs. Because now these, you know, uh, commercial areas aren't going to be pulling from that grid as well. So it's just, um, I don't know, I think we have a lot of planning to do in that sense or, you know. Depending on where the funds, if the state's doing it or if people have to pay for, pay for them themselves. Most business owners, like you said, they're re- they're renting these spaces. So it would be more like, if there was like uh, programs that the owners of those properties could apply for those. And then, you know, just trying to create microgrids within that, with batteries.
And one of the huge advantages to that is that if somebody hits a power pole down the road, the entire community isn't suddenly out of their oxygen machines or whatever they need. It's something that especially older people need is.
Yeah, because it is, we, we are in a very rural area, so you know, one pole can take out an entire community and like that, so. Yeah, just having those batteries, it's like a backup, like hospitals have, they have their own generators and, you know, places that need it like that. But um, you know, either generators or, but trying to use that renewable energy because it could just be a part of the buildings, you know, part of the buildings that are going to be, you know, up, upgraded to that, so. That's, that's all, that was my comment. Um, if there's no more questions, I'd like to open up public input for this um, item, seven B. If you would like to speak, anyone in the chambers, you're welcome to come up to the podium. And please state your first and last name and you'll have uh, three minutes.
Linda Larson, I've lived here for.
Uh, would you like to come up to the podium?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Little stroke of reality here, I've lived here for thirty years and raised four children.
Sorry to interrupt, could you state your first and last name again for the record?
Linda Larson.
Thank you.
And I've seen where you've emphasized healthcare and ag in terms of jobs. So uh, are we talking about healthcare and, and ag for jobs? Are we talking about trade schools? Because somebody, one of you members mentioned trade schools. I want to see where we can really develop our students so they can go on and make a living for themselves in Lake County and it isn't going to happen, not what I've seen. I've raised four kids here and my son. I've raised four kids here, and my son, who's a firefighter paramedic, he can't make a living here. So he's, he works down in Marin County, he's very happy. He travels internationally every six months, he's going off somewhere. I'm a little cur, uh, uh, concerned about some of your contradictions. And, uh, I've seen downtown Lakeport, the businesses, and they're far and few, and they're not doing quite well because, in essence, people utilize such websites as Amazon, et cetera. So how are you going to appeal, number one, to a small business owner, and number two, to builders? Because I've been a Realtor for thirty years, and I'm a building inspector. And I don't, I don't see the builders here staying long because they're going over the mountain to make a living for their families. So I just wanna say, we have to be on a reality spectrum here and not fool ourselves. So I can see what you're doing, and I applaud you for it. I'm just trying to just squeeze in a little reality from my thirty years of living in Lake County. And it's been concerning, because as I said before, I raised four children. I want them to go off and have families and be secure financially and otherwise, in a risk-free environment, which is pretty much, we've got that, because we keep on emphasizing rural, rural, rural. Well, there's an upside and a downside to all that. My kids don't live here anymore. That's the first thing they did when they got out of high schools, I'm leaving! Yeah, and it's, and sad, and I've seen downtown Lakeport, the businesses come and go in the thirty years I've been here. And, uh, so that's my concern about, you have quite, um, a workload ahead of you. You know, and, and, you know, you've got, you're brave enough to go out and try to support the county. It's a beautiful county, but it certainly has its drawbacks for a lot of people. We were just talking to, um, Ms. Field, I was speaking with her on the lack of, uh, culture in the county, which is kind of a, uh, detriment. The, what I can see here in Lake County, it, what supports this county, unless you don't know, is that lake. That's, that's the moneymakers, that lake, that brings the best bass fishing in the country. So whether you, how are you going to cultivate businesses that are gonna be profitable? The profitable ones are the ones who are bait shops and things of that nature, and selling boats or whatever. Because that lake is supporting us, folks, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, and I agree with that statement. The lake is, you know, the very center of the, of the county, and that's what attracts everyone here. So that is, that was a great point, that everyone that comes here, short-term rentals, you know, bass fishing and all that stuff. I mean, it's the, it's what's gonna feed the, um, customers to the restaurants and, you know, people to invest their money from, from out of town. So I think that was a, that was a great comment, so thank you. Um, do we, oh, we do have someone here in chambers. Uh, please state your first and last name, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Elliot Hurwitz, and I'm, uh, from the Secret Springs Community Redevelopment Association in Cobb. And I hope it's okay, I'm gonna go slightly off topic just to let, invite you, uh, to the, uh, commemoration events tomorrow, which will be noting ten years since the valley fire. And I think that we have a lot to, to look back on, and even in terms of, of development altogether, there's a lot of lessons and, and things to reflect on about that. Tomorrow at one o'clock, at the Mandala Retreat and Wellness Center on Bottle Rock Road, there'll be an official, uh, gathering, uh, with representatives from across the community. Uh, we'll sound a little fire, uh, uh, alarm at one twenty-four. Uh, this is a spot that will be held close to the a, actual epicenter of the fire. And, um, so that will be the official, uh, kind of notice of that. And particularly as our, uh, Planning Commission, you are formally invited to come at that time. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone in chambers?
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners, staff, and thank you, staff, for putting together such a, um, solid presentation. I do share concerns that we're...
I'm just gonna interrupt for a second, and we know, we know who you are, but...
Sorry, I forgot, Margot Cambara.
Thank you.
So, um, continue. I do share, uh, a concern that was voiced by an earlier speaker that we need, um, to provide a livable wage, opportunities that have a livable wage for our children and our neighbors. Uh, also, career track jobs for the area, and I know that's a huge, huge challenge. But I, I am also hoping that you're up, up to that challenge. I am also heartened, um, about the website, because I think, um, knowledge would help us all pull together in the same direction, as well as identifying who all the economic development players are in the county. Because there are several, and it is confusing to know, um, the scope of each. Um, in terms of housing, I would, uh, like to continue, uh, the suggestions that were made by our commissioners, and that is to incentivize infill development, as suggested by Commissioner Zoller. Um, and to recognize and bake that into Hape, that, um, it's a goal to prioritize development in infill areas. And that's how things happen, is when they are incentivized and they are documented. Uh, as for, uh, energy, proactive energy measures are positive, promoting microgrids is positive. It would be helpful to know the specifications, uh, for the microgrids. For example, whether the microgrid, excuse me, microgrid is behind or in front of the meter, that matters. For maximum benefit to the energy consumer, a microgrid behind the meter is preferred. And so having that kind of information posted on the county website would be a huge opportunity, um, to pull, uh, the community together and col, have collective wisdom. And so we can have, uh, the best options available for Lake County. Especially if we can get this information prior to the request for qualifications going out. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Uh, we'll take a look in the Zoom room to see if we have any hands. Uh, there's no hands in the Zoom room. Gonna take a look back in the chambers if anybody wishes to come up. Seeing none, we'll be closing public input for this.
I was just gonna quickly comment that, um, regarding the lakes, so we do have the Tourism Improvement District here, uh, Visit Lake County. And they definitely feature the lake a lot, um, and they have talked extensively about the bass fishing and, uh, Bass Masters Award with twenty twenty-five as the best bass fishing lake. I think, uh, initiative, which hopefully, um, the website and the upcoming marketing collateral and just getting out more and the commercial real estate community outside of Lake County and the Bay Area and Sacramento is making the case for hotel development. Um, so kind of the two-to-three-star hotel, Holiday Inn Express or something like that, you know. In Ukiah, they have three of them grouped together right there, and having that, um, quantity of hotel rooms could really help drive events on the lake. So that's currently in an issue, you know, we have several great small proprietors, uh, around the lake, but just having that volume of rooms can really drive, because it is a great asset. Um, but if you don't have the lodging, it's underutilized.
I have a question about something that you mentioned, and, uh, can you give us more information on what are, what are the, uh, impact fees? I mean, I know what that means, but I mean, specifically, what's the impact, and, and who has to pay?
So the developer has to pay. And so, a lot of times, you know, we had the discussion before, and that was more housing, but on vacant commercial properties. One, if it's not up to code, they have to pay for those improvements to get the permit. And then, two, there's impact fees, just, um, that's part of the financing mechanism here and throughout California. Um, how, because these, um, all these independent water sewer systems, they have to be economically self-sufficient. And to be honest, some are not in a good state of repair, as you've probably heard many times. Um, and so those impact fees help, uh, make the system financially stable. But it is, you know, some states don't have any impact fees. And it's, the financing structure's different, and so, and especially here in California with Prop thirteen, um, it's evolved in a way where we require a lot of the financing to be on new development, to support utility systems and state and local government. And when you don't have kind of that private sector demand that maybe you would have in the Bay Area, it impedes development.
So, does the county have any flexibility in the amount of, uh, the, the dollar figure of, of the fees? Or does this, is it, um, determined by the state and dictated to each one of the counties?
It's determined by the county, but, um, remember, the, the individual utility systems do have to be economically self-sustaining. So that's really what's driving those numbers.
Thank you.
I just have a, a comment to add, and I hate to be a Debbie downer, but, and I apologize to Debbie. Um, but we, uh, um, talked about the economic impact of, uh, both healthcare and ag. And I guess I just wanna make a comment that here in Lake County, because, and basically it's, you showed a picture of, of, uh, Scully Packing. And, uh, I believe it was that not too long ago, we had twelve packing houses in Lake County, and we are basically down to one. Um, or Scully is, is our packing, our pear packing house. And so I just wanna make the comment that I am concerned about ag here in Lake County, not just pears, but pears, walnuts, and grapes, and, and other agricultural products and, and food, and a food source. Um, so, I'm not, I don't have any answers, uh, but I just wanted to make that comment that I am concerned about ag remaining a economic driver of Lake County, and how we can go about making sure or ensuring its viability and supporting the industry, thank you.
And I'd just like to add, Scully does not have the capacity to handle all the fruit that is produced in Lake County. So I, for example, have to take my fruit out of county, which is very expensive. Um, and also, we all know that the vineyard wine business is kind of in the dumps right now. Monica can probably, she's a little more on top of that than I am these days, but these are important issues, I think.
There might be a role for not, you can't save the ag industry in kind of, you know, the lack of demand with wine grapes at the moment and structural changes. But there are certain things maybe the Planning Commission can help with. So thinking like Six Sigma, where there's a diversification of business operations, where they have, you know, um, Hotopia, I think, has over ninety units on their property, so that's generating a good amount of revenue. And then the business they bring in with, um, primarily, uh, mountain biking. Actually, the largest kind of out-of-county event is the State Mountain Bike Championship for Northern California at Six Sigma. It's over a thousand people. Um, so, providing that flexibility, both with our permitting to make it, we can do that, and then also with zoning and being creative with that. I think also with Gwinoc coming, you're gonna see more, not maybe an exact copy of Six Sigma, but adjacent or nearby rural properties in South County, uh, bu, building off that recreational economy.
Good point, especially as we're developing the general plan and the area plans and policies that we need to take a look at changing, um, to accommodate a little bit more diversity.
Public comment has been closed. I mean, it is non-timed, so I can open it if you would like to make a comment. So, public comment is opened. And you'll be given three minutes, state your first and last name.
Linda Larson, once again, um, factor in what, what emphasis or what importance does the cannabis industry have in, in the county still? I thought that Scully was turned over into a cannabis processing, uh, center. Uh, no, I could be wrong.
I think you're thinking of a different packing shed, the...
Okay, yeah. But back to the cannabis industry, does it have, still have much of an impact on Lake County's? I, I'm not familiar, but it still would be an interesting factor to integrate into what we're talking about now, in terms of development and money and opportunities and jobs, et cetera, et cetera. So, that was my comment, thank you.
So the agricultural department is starting to collect data from cannabis cultivators. We don't have the level of data from, we do with the crop report, um, but that's starting to be built out. There is some data, the state tracks through sales, um, but most of, um, the cannabis economy here is production. Um, so there's, there's a bit of data there, um, and also with the taxes we collect, uh, we can get a rough estimation where the overall industry is, but it's kind of hard to get a gauge for individual producers.
Uh, public comment is still open. And state your first and last name, you'll be given three minutes.
I think I've done this once or twice. Oh, my name's Sam Houston, and I, I've, um, I heard some things about the lake and, and the status of the lake. And I just wanted to let everybody know that tomorrow evening at, uh, at, uh, the Sopa Reis Theater at seven o'clock, and your dad's actually in the, in the documentary. There's a documentary, um, Hobbiton, Big Lake, Big Science. And we go over, um, if you, last year, there was a science symposium, and we did a preliminary of the documentary at that symposium. Well, we've expanded it, and, um, showing the collaboration, the current science, the current, um, uh, the, all the work that your tribes are doing, we tried to integrate that into it. And it's about, uh, it's almost two hours long, and, uh, there's about thirty-two people that speak in it. And it goes and talks about, um, the things that are going on, the care, the rehabilitation, the collaborative work. So I just want to invite everybody, um, at the Sopa Reis. And if you want to make a donation, it goes to the Sopa Reis Theater, so they can, it helps with their rehabilitation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Margot Cambara, um, sorry, part two, I forgot this comment to make, uh, going back to housing. And that is on, um, the housing site analysis and the tool, the site selection tool. So the question is, does that include infill opportunities? And if it doesn't, very helpful to include, um, infill opportunities in, in that site selection tool, thank you.
Uh, first, the infill is one of the top priorities in the Hape, um, if you read the document. Um, and then, secondly, uh, the sites analysis isn't specific for infill. Um, as we further refine it, um, we can identify the different types of housing there.
I was just gonna quickly add, you can use it to look at infill, uh, parcels. So you can filter down and just, you know, zoom to a certain geography you're interested in that's in a municipality or built-up area of the county and look, and go through the different filters and see what's applicable.
One more quick thing, there's a sites analysis, which is a, a lengthy, kind of like Excel spreadsheet document, um, that we have. And then there's the interactive web map, and so that's what, uh, Ben is referring to. So the interactive web map, you can look and, and have different filters.
Uh, we'll take a look in the Zoom room to see if there's anyone, no hands in the Zoom room, no hands in the chambers, public comment is closed. And bringing it back to the commission for further discussion or comments.
I have, um, I just have a comment or question about, uh, with infill development. Also, sometimes we have some very small parcels, uh, that if combined together, you know, might make, uh, it be more attractive to a developer. So I guess I just wanna throw out, and I hope somebody maybe is considering, uh, perhaps incentives for, uh, combining parcels. Thank you.
All right, seeing no more comments or discussion on the topic. Um, we'll close it and move on to our department update.
We have no department update today. Thank you.
No department update? All right, well, I wanna thank everyone for coming to our meeting today. And thank you, staff. Thank you, planning commissioners. And we'll adjourn the meeting at eleven twenty-five. I didn't get my